John Mudd, Tracy. Evelyn will not be here tonight. I am expecting Greg, so he may join a little bit later.
I am here.
Was that Greg?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, but I don't see your name on the list.
Recording has begun, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just so you're aware, Greg, since you are present tonight and Evelyn is not, you are a voting member if we have anything to vote on. With that, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mudd, can I ask you to lead us?
Yes, sir.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from the June 7th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Or let me ask that in a negative way. Let me know if you have not had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Could someone make a motion to accept the minutes?
This is Greg. I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Dawn Banks. I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the minutes? Not hearing any. I'll go for a vote. Greg, are you in favor?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And as am I. The minutes are passed unanimously. Thank you. Matters of discussion, Chapter 191, zoning code parking regulations.
Right, good evening.
Director Harrington, the table is yours.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. So the parking chapter of the zoning code was brought to light at the February meeting when we reviewed the Magnolia Gardens major site plan, and a consensus was provided for the town staff to start reviewing parking regulations, looking at different options, and starting the discussion on how we can proceed with our parking. So I did do an overview of previous parking waiver requests in recent years. I didn't go all the way back. I just wanted to provide some examples of what we have approved recently. And then I did do some research to look at different sources, including the American Planning Association, some other codes that I found in the area, and the actual international parking guide. So there are, there is no doubt that parking is needed. You know, majority of people in Southern Maryland drive private automobiles. But I think that we can look at our code and try to reform it to allow for adequate parking without too much parking. Currently, the way that we have our code set up is for minimum parking spaces. And research has shown that when you have an overabundance of impervious surface, it can not only, just, it just doesn't look nice, but it also has some effects on the environment. And the, something I found was very interesting was the heat index for the Towneville Plata, and I attached a, an interesting map that was provided by the Davie Resource Group, who is working with the town and the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay for our tree inventory. So they did an overview of the land area in the town, looking at impervious area and forested area. So where you have all the green, that is currently open space. And you can see that the majority of the open space that you see on the map is for Heritage Green and the kind of Stagecoach subdivision down in the bottom corner. And those are going to be developed. So the more impervious surface that you have, the higher the heat index is for the town overall. So I just thought that that was an interesting fact to bring up. And then reducing the overall amount of impervious area in the town will also assist us with our MS4, our stormwater management permit through the state, in order to reduce stormwater runoff and protecting the environmental areas that we have. While I don't have an exact count of the number of parking spaces currently available, we do have some, like I said, according to the land use map, we have some rough numbers as to the amount of impervious area. So right now, there's 954.33 acres, or roughly 20% of the town's current acreage is impervious area. And as noted, we will have upcoming projects, including Heritage Green, Rosewood Corner, Stagecoach, that weren't taken into account with that impervious land cover map, since they have not been developed yet. And as we continue to grow, the impervious area will increase, and the tree canopy, grass, vegetation, bare soil, those will decrease. So we do want to make sure that we're keeping a good balance of our land cover. And since we are a tree city and a bird city, we do want to ensure that we have trees and we have birds and landscaping, so we don't want to wipe all of that out. I also found an interesting article by Donald Shoup, who is an FAICP. And he put a, wrote an article, "Putting a Cap on Parking Requirements." And they included this in the May 2015 American Planning Association magazine. And I will read his quote, where he says, "Planners are put in a difficult position when asked to set parking requirements and zoning ordinances, largely because they do not know the parking demand at every site, or how much the parking spaces cost, or how much, or how the requirements increase the cost of development. Nevertheless, cities have managed to set parking requirements for hundreds of land uses in thousands of cities, the 10,000 commandments of off-street parking." So he is a distinguished professor of urban planning at the University of California in Los Angeles. And he's also written a couple of other books that have been published by the APA, or the American Planning Association. So there are a few ways that we can look at addressing our parking regulations. And I found there isn't one way to go. People in different cities, different municipalities, counties, there's a wide range of options that can be utilized. So there's some that utilize the International Transportation Parking General Manual strictly. You know, you don't have anything in your code. It just references the most recent version of the ITE Parking Manual. And the engineers and applicants would utilize that to provide their parking calculations. Another option I saw was to remove parking minimums and utilize parking maximums, or parking caps, as they say. So instead of saying that each use has to have a minimum of 11 spaces, you know, you'd say you can only have a maximum of 20 spaces. So that's another way of looking at it. And then there are some municipalities and places that I've found that set parking minimums and maximums based on the type of development zoning category, or, you know, what they, what they think might be the best fit. Or we could just leave it as it is and continue reviewing parking waivers. So we do have a few options. But before I go too far into amending the code and, and, you know, providing you with an updated code to start reviewing, I did want to get the initial feedback from the Planning Commission as to your thoughts, if you had any strong opinions, one way or another, before I move forward, that way we can kind of see what parking standards would work, and also evaluate our landscaping and prioritizing pedestrian-friendly travel. I know that there's a lot of roads in the town that are not owned and operated by the town. So the state is in control of several, and the county is in control of several. And as we develop, we are working with both of those entities to ensure that sidewalks are being provided, that we're looking at the entrances and exits and those types of things, as well as traffic. So it's a joint effort, but I think that we can look at our parking standards. I think generally, from a staff perspective, I was kind of leaning towards the, either utilizing the ITE Parking Manual or setting those parking maximums, or parking caps, to utilize for the town. But again, I wanted to make sure that I gave the Planning Commission a chance to kind of get an overview and kind of give me your initial thoughts before I dove too far into that.
So are there any questions or comments from the commissioners in response to the director's statement?
Yes, I have a question. Are you speaking of residential and/or commercial? And are you speaking of any particular location or just in general?
So in general, it is what we're looking at. Obviously, residential is a little bit different unless you're looking at multifamily, which we still kind of look at on the commercial scale as far as development and the building permits go. So really, single-family homes and townhomes, you're going to get the standard two parking spaces per dwelling, potentially some on-street parking in neighborhoods, those types of things. So it's really pertaining to commercial and multifamily, or office uses, anything other than single-family dwellings and townhome dwellings, to look at these parking regulations.
Tracy, do you have any further questions or comments there?
I don't, thank you.
Dawn, you have your hand raised?
I do. Couldn't get to mute quick enough. Thank you so much, Director Harrington. The information that you provided was extremely helpful. I was hopeful that I could see another article beyond 2015, but the other information was extremely helpful. Doing just a little research of my own, I wonder if we wouldn't think of the combined maximum and minimum standards based on the land use. Because I think a one-size-fits-all is not always the best approved.
And we absolutely, that is definitely a safe route to take. And there are several examples of other municipalities that have utilized minimums and maximums. So absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Greg, have your hand raised?
Yes. First, I'd like to say, Ms. Harrington, that I had a very positive view of the information you sent out. And I was very happy you did, and I lean towards the maximum parking caps that I think that you recommended. But my question is, just out of curiosity, what would be the second and third order of fix if we just said for a period of time, we were not going to approve any waivers? And then see how things went during that period of time?
So we would have to amend the code because we do, I mean, unless you had a valid reason not to approve the parking waiver. If they, if they provided justification as to why the parking would meet the use, and that's what we found in most instances, since they're utilizing the ITE Parking Manual. But we do have that written into our code as an option. So we would have to really look at their requests, and if they had a valid reasoning as to why they were asking for the waiver, you know, kind of make that determination. You can deny a parking waiver. It just needs to be based on some kind of, you know, information or realization as to why what they're providing is not going to fit the use.
But I guess my specific question is, how does that impact what you're trying to accomplish?
So it, in essence, for example, if you looked at either, you know, Magnolia Gardens or Rosewood Corner, you know, there obviously is, as property owners and developers, they're looking to get the most kind of return on their investment, so they want to get the maximum number of units that they can get on the site. So if we were to deny a parking waiver based on credible information as to why we felt that that was not needed, they would have to reduce the footprint or reduce the number of units for that use in order to meet the parking requirements that are in our code. There's just a loss of money on the developer's side in some aspects, depending on what they're doing.
Okay, thank you for the response.
Anything else, Greg?
No, he answered my question.
Okay, John, you have your hand raised?
I do, thanks. I did review all the information provided, and Janine, it was very thorough and well thought out the items you included. I thought the APA report was very thorough and detailed. Again, all the documentation was very much on point. The only point I would make is that the whole topic of parking, you know, can be written into volumes by learned professors across the country.
Did we?
I would suggest that it doesn't have to be as complicated as some of the, you know, information was provided. My thoughts are, the town should maintain in the zoning code its own minimum and maximum standards for parking. I steer away from simply using the ITE method. Again, I have nothing against the agency, the document as well, created. It's based on real-time data and information from across the country, so it's certainly a great snapshot, a great snapshot in terms of what goes on where. But I don't think it's the end-all solution to determining parking. If the town was to simply utilize the ITE, to me, in some ways, that's kind of shirking the Planning Commission's responsibility and shirking the responsibility of the zoning ordinance to ensure that there is adequate parking and not simply rely on the developer to tell us what they think's going to work based on ITE. So I would steer away from simply using that as the only method. I think, I think the ITE numbers should be consulted as you put together an amendment package. And I think there's a lot of valuable information that document can provide as you would fine-tune what becomes a draft ordinance. I think you have to have minimums. I don't know how a developer can come to a county and begin to even plan his development without understanding what the minimum threshold is going to be expected for parking. At the same time, I think we can, and you can, develop minimum standards that are sensitive to the current market, the current economies, okay? When I was with Charles County, the same complaint occurred over the years. Years and years ago, the county was really heavy on parking. Boy, they wanted parking, maximum parking wherever they could get it. Now, the regional shopping mall, everybody's seen it, and talk about a sea of asphalt, talk about an overparked facility, there it is. Some problems that will occur in the town and did occur in the county was the reuse of sites. One example was a particular, say, the two-acre parcel. It was a building-intensive original use, okay? There was a lot of building because it was a warehouse-type facility where the customer footprint was very minimal. So to do that, they were able to maximize their warehouse space and minimize their parking. 10 years later, the vacant building's been sold to a patron-intensive use looking to utilize this huge space. The problem was there was woefully inadequate parking to support the proposed use. So that was, again, just an example of where those sort of situations can really become a problem. So again, my thought is that we, you should steer towards a minimum and maximum series of code requirements. I think you should take into account, particularly with apartments, and that's what we've done with the waivers, where a reduction in parking was viable simply because you had adjacent commercial spaces that could serve as overflow and off-peak service. So that makes sense. Commercial, it shouldn't be that difficult to do. I think there's a lot of good standards. There's some communities around that are having great success with their standards. One thing we used to do, and which would be helpful here, would be to find some jurisdictions, maybe even in Maryland, who maybe have very lenient standards, okay? Who lean towards the minimum amount barely acceptable. And talk to them and say, you know, what's happening in your county, your jurisdiction? Are these numbers working? Are there complaints in projects where people talk about not enough parking? Those real-time scenarios are helpful to understand just what too little is too little. And I'm certainly the first person to suggest that we don't need excess parking. The county used to penalize developers by indicating that if they wanted to exceed the standard parking amount, they would then have to, you know, pay extra. They also got a discount when they stayed under, to a certain degree. And anything over had to be with pervious pavement. So again, there was an effort to try to minimize the adverse effect of too much pavement. So those are my thoughts. I mean, I think one final word is that as you create a parking amendment to the zoning ordinance, I think it's important that we pay attention to not just the number of spaces, but some effort made towards internal layout standards where loading should occur potentially. And the most important thing is how you orient parking fields adjacent to exit and entry points. There needs to be adequate design consideration to allow traffic to get off the road into the facility before you're jockeying with position with people trying to park. So you really can't have a drive aisle and a parking stall using the same space. So that's where, including some basic layout standards, will guide and direct a developer and their designers to do the best possible layout. So again, those are my thoughts right now. I thought the other Planning Commission members tonight had some very good ideas. And obviously, it's nice to see that everybody's been reviewing the information. And again, you put together a really nice package. So again, my suggestion is that you would proceed, and your department proceed, with an amendment that, again, still maintains control through the ordinance, creates minimum and maximum standards, but looks to really modernize the standards, to create standards that are conducive to what the current development community is looking to do. And with that, I will stop talking.
Thank you, John. Janine, I do have some comments and or questions. I'll start with the questions. Do we, the town, have any control over the on-street parking for Route 6, since that's a state highway? And is that part of the discussion here?
It's not really. Anything that's a state road is pretty much, I don't want to say off the table, but it's very difficult to change some things with that. I know the state highway is currently, we, they're working on a study for Route 6. The town manager and myself walked all the way down Route 6 with the District 5 engineer and their consultant to look at problem areas. We did talk about the on-street parking. We talked about some of the, you know, we have so many entrances and exits that are all at the same point, and people are trying to turn left. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of dangerous intersections along Route 6. So that was part of the conversation. So the town can't say, you know, we, you, we want you to take away that parking, and the state's going to be like, oh, okay, great, yeah, sure, we'll, we'll do that. They're going to do what they want to do, but they will take our input for the, you know, on certain things. So I know that they're open to talking about the on-street parking and how we can make that stretch of the roadway safer. But pretty much when we're looking at on-street parking, it's going to be town roads and potentially Charles County roads, working with their planning departments as, as we do development in those areas.
Okay, so I think you said some words in there that pretty much reinforced what I was thinking, that Route 6 is controlled by the state. They can take input from us, but they'll take, they'll make the final decision. And by extension, any county roads, the same idea, that Charles County makes the final decision with input from us. Okay, so that's a good segue to, do you know how the county is addressing this problem? Are they, do they have the problem as like we do? I mean, John had mentioned the mall. That's an extreme example of the problem. What do you, what do you think about how the county is approaching this?
So from what I understand, and I didn't dig too deep, I ran out of time since I was out of the office last week. But I think that they still utilize the parking minimums. And I haven't really heard one way or another. I'm not sure if John has any input on it. But he kind of mentioned that there were some issues within the county. And I think it's generally kind of a widespread issue, is that, you know, when we're looking at development, we want to make sure that there's a parking space for every single car. But there's also, when we did our comprehensive plan, I do recall that Mead and Hunt, when they did the parking analysis for the downtown, said you have an overabundance of parking, it's just not right in front of the store. So you have shared parking agreements, you know, behind the stops, so people have to walk a little bit. So that's something to keep in mind. If there's parking available, it's just, how are you advertising where that parking is? Do you have directional signage parking in the rear? You know, those are things that can be addressed as well to try to orient people to where the parking is so they can get out and walk around the downtown.
So that's a great segue to the example that I was going to bring up. I've been on the Planning Commission long enough to have gone through this process with the development between West Banco Bank and Burger King. There's three businesses there. And at the time those businesses went in, the spot that is now going to be developed on top of the hill, is that 101 Charles Street, I think? That piece of vacant property was used as part of the minimum requirement to satisfy those three businesses. Now, I think one of the businesses didn't end up being as originally planned. The original restaurant didn't get in there. But I, I tend to be there a lot, just based on my day-to-day dealings. And I don't think I've ever seen those parking lots, the ones on 301 and the one on the hill, anywhere near capacity. So I think that might be an example where we've used the minimums, put aside for a second the sharing that's coming with the new development, but used the minimums there, and that ended up with, I think, an overabundance of available parking that we're showing is not needed. Do you see that differently or similarly?
I agree with everything that you said. It was very clear, and that's one of the points that they brought up when we came forward with the 109 Charles Street Major Site Plan, is that, yes, there was this shared parking agreement and minimum parking requirements, but no one ever parked up on that top parking lot, ever. They used it for, you know, tree, Christmas tree sales and a couple other things, the, you know, police would sit up there. But no one used it for parking. They didn't want to walk all the way down the stairs and then around to the building. So it was never utilized, and it was pretty clear that there was plenty of parking down by the, the actual businesses for the uses that were there.
So I don't want to use the idea of minimum parking and that example being generic in everything, because every site's got its own peculiarities. But, so that goes to the options that you proposed. Are you proposing that we settle on one option, or could multiple options be on the table? And maximum, and the ITE, could they all be considered based on the peculiarities of a particular site?
So we certainly could look at a combination. In essence, if you wanted to kind of utilize the minimum and maximum as the base and still have an option for the parking waiver, or, you know, parking deferral, those types of things, and specifically utilize the ITE manual, we could certainly do that. I think it would be best to have, you know, the base requirements I think it would be best to have, you know, the base requirements. And it seems so far that we had two kind of in favor of the minimum and maximum, which makes sense and I definitely understand that. You could also still have a parking waiver process, whereas if they wanted to do something completely different, they would have to show how it worked and provide their calculations and, and, you know, we could analyze it from that point of view.
So considering the current status primarily parking spot. What is the basis for that number? Is it the ITE manual?
Well, that's, and that's what John was alluding to when he kind of spoke earlier, is that we could utilize the ITE manual to see what their recommendations are. The other thing that I would do is take a deeper look at the different municipalities that would kind of mimic the town more in the size and, and the types of uses that they see. And kind of see what they, what they do and how that's functioning. You know, John mentioned reaching out to different municipalities and different counties to ask them how their parking regulations are working. That's an excellent idea. It's always beneficial to communicate with other planners and, and see what's working and what's not working.
Right. Yeah, I, again, to reinforce that, I think St. Mary's County or Sister County to the south, particularly with all the activity near Lexington Park, I think they probably have a lot of good examples of office space, retail, and what are they finding? What are the standards that they're using? I mean, typically, commercial standards are based on square footage. Past history in Charles County, for example, you need one space per X square footage of, you know, retail space, X square footage for storage. So they, they did break it down into the actual uses within the building to focus on parking for where the customers are going to be. Employee parking is also written into certain uses to make sure there's a minimum standard there. So it, it, it doesn't have to be overly complex. There's a lot of existing examples of really well-done ordinances that you could pull from. I think a waiver process is certainly viable to do. Now, my only concern would be is that if we go to all this trouble and we amend the ordinance, we continue with a waiver process. But if we're inundated, if, if every application is brought forward with a waiver, then we're going to have to question, you know, what's wrong with our regulations? So I think it should be an option for those rare cases where a particular case is unique. And again, it's going to be up to the applicant to demonstrate to this board that it's viable and should be approved. So waivers shouldn't be, you know, run-of-the-mill. They should be exceptions to the exception. But I still think you should have and can have a waiver process for those unique situations.
The last comment that I would make is I would advise of, you don't get yourself boxed into a place where one size fits all. In, in your documentation you provided for, you quite clearly pointed out what's real, that parking for residents, it's mostly evening and overnight. And parking for businesses is usually during the day. Well, then what about the properties that have both? And, and we're, we're certainly entertaining more and more developments that have mixed uses like that. So we need to make sure that whichever way we go, and I like the idea of having maximums built in, using that example that I had. But if there's a way to make it as flexible as possible, then that might, might minimize the number of waivers that come, come to us.
And I think an important thing to note is that right now, our waiver process is very vague. So it says the planning commission can approve a waiver if they want to. That's basically what our code says currently. So I think that if we were to amend our code to have the minimum and maximum as the base kind of standard, the waiver process would be more stringent. There would be more steps laid out as to when and how you could qualify for a waiver. And that way, the planning commission has kind of standards to base their decision off of. And just saying, instead of saying, yes, I like it or no, I don't like it, you know, you have a little bit more to stand on for that decision.
Yeah, that's a good point, Janine.
So I think I'm hearing somewhat of a consensus from the commission that the mix, the minimum and the max is a good way for you to take this to the next step. I don't think this is something that we would need to vote on. But I, I think I would ask the commission, am I misreading the, what I think is a consensus here? Anybody have feedback on that?
This is Greg. I'm right in line with you, uh, pressing your hand. I love the idea of a minimum, maximum. And just reviewing that waiver process, because it seems like that's what's driving the basic need for all this.
Last thing I'll say is John Mudd. Let's not ignore residential. We know single-family detached in townhomes is what, two units per unit? That's a pretty, pretty good standard. I guess the one that frightened me the most was the multifamily apartment that decreased the minimum requirement by 50 A spaces. That, you know, that's just, I didn't sleep good that night. So that, that's to me an extreme case where, you know, I, I hope that project doesn't have a problem in the future. And we should wa, watch it very carefully. But at the same time, residential shouldn't be ignored, obviously, throughout this process. But again, real nice job, Janine.
So Janine, do you have enough from us to take your next step?
I absolutely do. Like I said, I'm going to be looking at minimum and maximum as the base requirements and then look at different options for waivers with kind of more, you know, stringent standards to base the decisions off of in extreme situations. So that's where I'm going to start. And I will bring a draft back to the planning commission for review when I get that kind of initial draft done. And we'll take a, a kind of overview and then if there's additional comments or edits that the planning commission deems fit, then again, I'll go back and revise it, bring it back. And once you are comfortable with that chat, you know, with that section, then we can move forward with the council review and, and getting that changed. But I know John did, Mr. Mudd did point out a very good point. And I will kind of note that chapter 191 as a whole is pretty much going to need to be looked at as a whole, because as you look at the orientation of the parking and exits and entrances, that ties into our landscaping. And as I pointed out, we're doing the Keep La Plata Beautiful and the Tree City, Bird City. So we want to move towards native plantings where possible. So it's all going to kind of tie in together when we get to the end of this. And that will also tie into the, why am I drawing a blank? I'm, I'm really tired. I think I've been up almost 48 hours now.
Bottom line, what you're really saying is nothing is standalone. If you make a change here, you're affecting other things in the code and we need to be cautious of that.
That's the traffic manual. We're working on the traffic manual that will be a part of chapter 191. So that will tie into this as well.
Excellent. Okay, so I think, I appreciate everyone's input and obvious review of the materials for that part of the agenda. I think we can move on to the next item, 3.2 Town Residential Zoning Categories and Priority Funding Areas. Back to you, Janine.
Thank you. So this is a recent discovery that has been brought to my attention by the state of Maryland. We've had, staff has had a couple of meetings with the Maryland Department of Planning and Charles County Department of Planning to look at these single-lot annexations that are coming in. We're seeing more and more failing septics in the area surrounding the town boundary. And we've already had two recent ones that have been denied for the priority funding area, which you have to be priority funding area in order to receive funding to install and connect to the town's public water and sewer infrastructure. So the health department will give individual residents up to $20,000 to help pay for the connection of water and sewer facilities. So it's a huge incentive to get people off of septic systems. And we're, after talking to the health department, they're letting me know that I know that we've only seen a couple right now, but they're seeing more and more properties that are falling into the, your, your septic is going to fail or it is failing. So I already have two more people that are talking to me about wanting to annex into the town to connect to water and sewer. So when this, when the Charles County Health Department goes onsite and does their septic tests, they give homeowners a few options in order to upgrade their system if it's failing. So the first is to install a, an innovative septic system, which could include a mound system where you have the raised grounds that would allow the, the septic water to filter down, since it's, the water tables not allowing it to go through the, the actual property anymore. So you have to build a fake kind of drainage field mound system in order for that to work. The other option is to install a sewage holding tank, which I'm sure nobody wants to have a giant sewage tank above ground or, or anywhere. And you'd have to get that pumped out on a regular basis. This would also require the homeowner to retrofit their house with low-flow fixtures and practice water conservation, because there's only so much that you can hold at a certain time with those septic tanks. And then, of course, their third option is to annex into the town and connect to public water and sewer. And you can, like I said, if you can get the PFA designation, then you're eligible for the Bay Restoration Grant Funding. If they are not deemed priority funding area, then they, the town has to apply for a priority funding area exception request. So I am currently in the process of applying for the two properties that were not designated as PFA. So that was 143 Morgan's Ridge Road and the 10411 La Plata Road that we just annexed into the town. So those two, because of their zoning category, and I, I didn't understand it for a long time. The state kept sending it back to me that it didn't meet the PFA for the minimum density. And I was like, I don't understand what you're talking about. If you look at the, the, the size of the property and you divide it by, you know, 21,000 square feet, you get, you know, like 4.6 dwelling units per acre. I don't understand why you're not qualifying this. And they broke it down for me and said that they look at the base zoning category, which I've kind of broken down later on, on page two, where the R21 zone, if you calculate that out just by, you know, the 43,560, that's a standard acre. The R21 is 2.07 dwelling units per acre as a base. Therefore, it does not qualify for priority funding area, which has to be 3.5 dwelling units per acre. Every other zone that we have does qualify. So that's why I'm bringing this forward, is to kind of get a feel by the planning commission as to if they had a strong opinion one way or another. Because there's, there's different issues that arise that, you know, say, well, just, you know, zone them to R10. Well, if we do that, we have to go back and amend our land use map with the comprehensive plan, because that lays out what the future land uses are supposed to be. So everything in, you know, the, the kind of low-density residential areas that are outside the town's boundary currently are zoned for low-density residential. So we either need to amend the R21 zone, which may or may not have some impact to existing properties in the town. We could create a new zone for the areas outside of the town boundary that would just meet the density requirements for the PFA and, and kind of create a new zone. Or you can amend the kind of comprehensive plan and change what those areas are, are shown for the future land use map in order to enable them to be zoned R10 or R8 or whatever would work best for the situation. So it's, it is a complicated issue. And I, I'm going to have to work very closely with the Maryland Department of Planning and Charles County Government both with this issue, so it's not just a zoning issue. This is also ties into the Charles County per the state, the properties that are being annexed have to meet the planned for water and sewer service. So if it's zoned W6E and S6, that means it's not planned for service. And the county has to amend their comprehensive water and sewer master plan to show them as W3S3, which is planned for service, or to create a new category saying it's not connected right now, but it could be. So we're kind of working through that independently of this. But it still boils down to, we have to be able to meet that 3.5 dwelling units per acre in order to be PFA, in order for these homeowners to get the assistance that they need to connect to water and sewer. Because it's, it's more than $20,000 to actually connect to the town's water and sewer system. The major facility fee alone is just over $16,000. That doesn't take into account hiring a contractor, you know, actually laying the lines, doing the connections, the utility permits and inspections, those types of things. So it's definitely over $20,000 and that money goes a long way to helping these residents fix their issues. It also plays into the state's overall smart growth model that they don't want properties on septic systems, because the septic systems are bad for the watershed. It's not good for the environment. You want to get everything going to a BNR-rated wastewater treatment plant that treats the water. And as I've heard many times before, the water that comes out of our wastewater treatment plant is actually cleaner than the water that's already in the stream. So we clean up the watersheds by connecting properties to, to water and sewer, as long as we're maintaining our wastewater treatment plant, which I know we do. But it's just something to think about overall. So this is something that I've kind of struggled with. I didn't know, you know, if the planning commission had any strong opinions one way or another on how they think that we can resolve this issue.
So questions or comments from the commissioners?
Janine, John Mudd. You, you've explained the, the process to the state about requesting an, an exception or an exemption. And obviously, all of those are laborious and time-consuming and involved. And somebody will review it at the state level when they're ready, type of thing. Yet, I would dare hope the state could be a little more lenient in their review of these type of things. If they're not, then that's a shame. These are unique situations, for sure. These people will need help to get out of a bad situ, physical situation. They need public water and sewer. And, you know, PFA goes a long way to making that a reality for them and for everybody. So short of the town, I mean, the, the other option is you create a news warning category and you comprehensively rezone these annexation parcels, single parcel rezoning, cop rezoning, which the town can do whenever you want. That basically, you know, doesn't set the world on fire in terms of future potential density, but is only applicable to that property, but yet would then meet the test for the state zoning category density. I mean, that's a roundabout way of doing it. It's a way of defeating the state's criteria. And that's why I would think the state would be more conducive to quicker consideration of these exemptions. And, and these are clear-cut cases where they should be approved. Obviously, you've had success with Charles County, because they've obviously been willing to amend the comprehensive water and sewer plan as the need arises to redesignate those as 3W3. So that mechanism seems to be working, although again, that's not an automatic. It takes effort. And, and it's not as if you're going to necessarily be inundated with these. I know there's more down the line, potentially, but at the same time, it shouldn't be, you know, hundreds of applications. So I would hope that Charles County attitude would continue in their cooperative stance. And, and again, ma, maybe it deals with talking to the right people at the state and trying to implore them to provide a more lenient and user-friendly process to complete these applications.
I don't think that's going to be a solution, unfortunately. Because they have to go through their own public hearing process, which is, takes so long. Um, we are talking to the which is take so long. Um, we are talking to the county with um comprehensively amending the town's municipal growth area to create a, you know, W three S three is like planned for service right now. It's gonna happen. Um, so there's another category, I think it was W five S five, and the state said basically, if you want to make that as, you know, it's not planned for service right now, but it could be connected at any point, and that would be kind of the triggering mechanism um for qualifying for the PFA. Um, so we are talking about doing that. Um, again, it's gonna take some coordination and and we're, I'm trying to get ahead of this so we don't end up having a bunch of properties trying to come in because their septic is failing. And, you know, like 143 Morgans Ridge Road, I feel terrible for that resident, and I wish I could help more because they've been dealing with this for almost two years now. And I can't help her. You know, I can't just connect her to water and sewer um if she doesn't have the funds to pay for it, you know, without using the Bay Restoration Grant Funding. Um, so I want to get ahead of this. So the idea is to do a comprehensive water and sewer amendment for the municipal growth area to kind of show it being planned for service in the future, so that way it qualifies. Um, I was kind of leaning towards maybe we should just create another low-density um in between, and that way we don't have to change the land use map, you know, instead of um, because you have a kind of gap there between the R twenty one and the R ten at two point zero seven dwelling units per acre, and then the R ten is four point three five. So you could create an R thirteen zone that's three point five, you know. How we want to do it.
Well, I mean, I think I think that makes sense, Janine, and the problem is you're trying to play catch up on these that have now been annexed that are in in a bind. If you if you created the zone um at the annexation of a future property, is that's the time when you would apply, the town would apply that zone to the property at the annexation, and and you're basically done. Uh, that in in concert with the public public water and sewer maps. Um, so maybe that's that's the solution for the future. How to get, you know, these current ones retrofitted is a is a harder thing to do, uh but I think I think it's doable.
Application, application. And like I said, they've they've already been submitted to the Maryland Department of the Environment and Maryland Department of Planning, but they have their public comments and public hearing process, which could take three to six months. So it's a waiting game at this point.
Right.
Uh, Greg, you have your hand upraised?
Yes, I had a several questions for Ms. Harrington on this because I had some concerns. And I just wanted to make sure that make sure my concerns were valid, that it wasn't misunderstanding what was going on. So the first question I have, Ms. Harrington, is the way I read the staff report, there are two groups of people. One is those group of people that have already been annexed in that don't have an applicable zoning code that will allow the state to approve this action. But then there's another group of people who may request to be annexed in just to be hooked up to our system. Is that understanding correct?
For the, I I get, it is a tough situation. We have two properties right now that were annexed in, and they were zoned R twenty one uh because that's what the um adjacent zoning categories were and what it was zoned under the comprehensive land use map. They were zoned as low-density residential, which under our code is just R twenty one. Um, so we do have those two properties that are struggling right now, and so I'm having to do the priority funding area exception request. Um, the idea would be to make everything in the municipal growth area a zoning category um that would meet the minimum three point five dwelling units per acre, so we don't have to do an exception request with every single property. There it it's 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 hard. It's a hard one, and I've struggled with this. I'm I'm the best way to move forward with this. Um, because it's just a tough situation. The state is, you know, kind of firm and rigid in in their regulations and what they're gonna allow. I kept trying to argue for the two properties that we had in. Um, but they said, no, it doesn't meet the requirements. We'll make it a PFA comment area. Um, and that's that's all that they would do. So
so so just so I'm clear, the two examples you gave us were individuals who had property, single lots that were already annexed. So where my concern is is for those that are just trying to be annexed for the septic. I don't see any, I don't see a issue there. That's what I, that was the point of my email earlier. I didn't see what what does that have to do with the tank? And that's why I was trying to distinguish, are there two different groups of people? I clearly see the ones that you're talking about, the two that are annexed in. But just for somebody who just wants to hook up, I didn't see any uh where we had any interest in that.
You do, because we we will not extend our water and sewer lines outside of the municipal boundary. So if you are not annexed into the town, you cannot connect to our water and sewer system.
So I I guess what I'm saying is, if I live, I'll just give you an example. If I live outside of town and my septic tank fails outside of municipal boundary. And so therefore, I want to exercise one of the three options, and I decide I want to hook up to the town. Okay, so in my mind, the question's become, okay, one, what is the benefit to the town? Two, is there any environmental harm if you have several individuals outside of municipality? If they didn't hook up, what would be the harm to the town? Or are we just doing this because, you know, as you mentioned earlier, the state goal, that's strongly encouraged, and we just want to be good neighbors? That's what I'm trying to distinguish in my mind.
So at the bottom yes, so at the bottom of page one, um and this came directly from the priority funding area exception request application. So there's a chart here. So when we look at um the Chesapeake Bay watershed, and when the state talks about pollution and um, you know, offflow into the bay, they're really looking at nitrogen, phosphorus, different minerals and and things that are going into the watershed that have an effect on the ecosystem. So nitrogen, if you have too much nitrogen in the water, it could kill off all the fish, or it could kill off all the vegetation. You have to have a balance. So if you have a property that is on, has a septic tank per the Maryland Department of the Environment, the total nitrogen discharged in pounds per year for a single-family home on a septic tank is twenty three pounds per year. If they do the um upgrade to like um um a mound system or a different type of option, it can be reduced a little bit down to eleven point five pounds per year. Um, if you connect to the town's wastewater treatment plant, the total nitrogen discharged for each single-family dwelling through the actual wastewater treatment plant is one point nine four pounds per year. So there's a big difference in the nitrogen discharge between a septic tank and going through an E N R um rated wastewater treatment plant for the watershed.
Okay, so I only have like one or two more questions. So going back to those that are outside the municipality, if nothing was done, that would be the responsibility of the county or the adjacent municipality, correct?
It would be the homeowner's responsibility, in essence.
The enforcement of it, or the monitoring of it would be the adjacent municipality, correct? Okay, and then um can you tell me, this is my last question, and and thank you. I I'm not trying to beat you up. I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Well, in these questions, because it is kind of complicated, and there's a lot to kind of process with that. So if we don't have a consensus tonight, that's absolutely fine. I just wanted to start the conversation and to get you thinking about this like I have been for the last couple of months.
Okay, okay. And so my last question is, what is the tangible benefit? Not what the state's goal is, but to the town, what is the tangible benefit from a zoning perspective that you see by um hooking up these individuals outside our current municipality, municipality boundary to the town? How does that support our zoning goals and that type of stuff? That's the last question I had.
From the zoning perspective, it doesn't have um really any impact negatively or positively. You know, that's why we have our comprehensive plan and the the land use map, the future land use map, to show where we want to expand out to. That's why we have the municipal growth app, municipal growth boundary. That is the farthest that we want to actually go out. We want to have a set, you know, boundary for the town. So any property that's within that municipal growth area, we've already kind of said, yes, we we see that property coming into the town at some point in order to connect to public water and sewer, to reduce pollution, to, you know, to get that kind of thing. It's an additional tax base for the town. Um, so there's smaller um benefits to the town besides um that, like I said, there's really no impact on the zoning per se.
Anything else, Greg?
No, I answered all my questions.
Okay, Dawn, you had your hand raised earlier. Do you still have a question?
I I didn't, thank you. I I didn't have a question, um more so a comment. I, as um Director um Harrington was discussing the potential options, like amend R twenty one or create a new zone. I was just hoping that my comment was that we consider all of the cascading effects within all of those options and have a clear understanding of, you know, what the uh the pros and cons would be around that.
Yes, that is um something I didn't get a chance to dive too deep into, but really, you're looking at King's Grant, Clark's Run, um, those existing neighborhoods in the town that are R twenty one that could potentially have some kind of impact, you know, whether somebody wanted to subdivide their lot. Um, would they be able to? Um, so those are, we we'll definitely have to take a closer look at it. That's why I was leaning more towards creating a new zone for the municipal growth area. So that way, it didn't affect the existing properties in town that are there that are R twenty one and were already considered PFA because it was the original town boundary that was done many, many years ago. Um, I I don't remember what year specifically they changed the priority funding area regulations. Um, but there was a a change made in more recent years that required the three point five dwelling units per acre. So everything else that was existing in the town as R twenty one is priority funding area. So really, the only areas of issue are the municipal growth boundary that currently have a low-density residential land use category under our comprehensive plan.
That that's extremely helpful, but my other comment is that in creating a new zone, um I'm just curious, what uh would we be setting some sort of precedent? Or is there any concern with setting a precedent that we wouldn't necessarily want to set?
There's always, um, you know, you always want to look at everything from all angles. So um by creating a new zone, you're also opening up, you know, anytime we do a comprehensive rezoning or um, you know, certain things that we do with our our comprehensive plan or our land use map, people could request a zoning change. Um, and that would have to be reviewed and recommended by the planning commission based on the comprehensive plan and reviewed and approved by the town council as part of an official zoning map um update that requires public hearings and that whole process. So it's something that you have to look at, the comprehensive plan, what that states, um, and really make sure that you're not causing any issues down the line. But if you're restricting it to basically anything that's in the municipal growth boundary, that should resolve most issues um that you might run across, which is why I said that's, I think it would be difficult to just change the R twenty one zone because then you are opening up everyone that's already R twenty one to re-subdivide or, you know, to do something that was not the intended use for that property.
Any further questions, Dawn, or comments?
None, thank you.
Okay, I I would like to piggyback on both the comments from Dawn and Greg. Um, and and use the example that if I were bordering the town of La Plata, I had a septic system was failing, and I was seeking to become part of the town so I could um get the benefit of uh using the municipal system. Um, the table that you provided really supports the incentive that Maryland, the the state of Maryland is trying to do, and a twenty thousand dollar incentive is nothing to laugh at. I know it's more expensive, but that can actually help the uh homeowner to make that transition. But if they say, okay, so let's say that I apply and I'm denied because I don't meet the uh three point five. Um, am I still entitled to get money from the state to help improve this? Okay, then why do they call, why do they set it at three point five? It seems arbitrary.
I have no idea. That is the number they came up with somehow. Um, I couldn't, I didn't get a chance to really dive too deep into that number and where that came from. But that is the number that the state came up with, and I guess somebody somewhere did some calculations and said three point five is the ideal density for priority funding area. They want
So having having heard that, I I kind of like this idea of just creating a zone to be able to make this happen. But since the Maryland requirement seems to be arbitrary to me, it makes me feel like we're just responding in arbitrariness. Um, and so that's the only thing that makes me uncomfortable about it.
I thought really hard. I I I think I ran a very fine line between sending, you know, a nasty gram to the the state, because I wasn't trying to be nasty, but I was trying to advocate for these residents, uh especially 143 Morgans Ridge Road, because she can't take a shower. She can't flush her toilets because her septic is backing up into her house. And I was trying to figure out any way that I could get her assistance as quickly as possible. And it just came down to the state law says this, it doesn't meet this, you can't do it. Um, and I was kind of like, I you're, what you're telling me and what your, you know, smart growth model is saying don't match up.
Yeah, it does seem to apply to their desire to decrease septic systems.
So I guess the the idea is that they want money to be followed to higher-density areas. Um, dwelling units came from offhand. I'll have to do some more research into that. And uh but like I said, at this point, we are responding to their kind of you know, their decision of three point five dwelling units per acre and just trying to make it work. And I absolutely agree that it's it's frustrating, and I'm yeah, that's why I've been struggling with this and why I wanted to bring it forward tonight, just to kind of have this initial discussion and to get feedback because it's not a simple resolution any way you look at it. There's still a lot that needs to be done to not only work with the county to amend the water and sewer maps. We have to um amend the zoning chapter, which we already are by opening up the parking standards and landscaping and and traffic manual and those things. So it's the ideal time to do it all together, uh which is why I'm kind of pushing for this and to ensure that we address this before we have a major problem, because like 143 Morgans Ridge Road is part of the Morgans Ridge subdivision. And it's gonna fall in like a domino. They're all gonna start having issues, and then they're all gonna start getting failing septics, and they're all gonna wanna slowly come into the town to connect to our our water and sewer. So how can we get ahead of this and and kind of prepare if there were to be an issue in the future?
So let me speak hypothetically. Let's say um we were all on board going with this special zoning. How many wickets do you have to cross to be able to make make that happen? You got town, county, uh Maryland, what what else? I mean, how soon could you help this lady's problem?
Well, like I said, for the the two existing ones, we're doing the PFA exception application. They've already been submitted. They're already under review. Um, that's the only avenue for them at this point. Um, the zoning category, the, if we created a new category and put it with the minimum dwelling units per acre at, you know, 3.5, we just have to look at our, our land, future land use map, which might be easier to change than some other things. And it's really the, the planning commission making a recommendation and the town council approving it. And everything else should fall in line because we're, we're obeying the, the state requirements. And from there, if we continue to have issues, then that's where we would look at our comprehensive plan and the future land use map and change those properties to, you know, something else that would fit in with the, the smart growth model. So right now we're, we're, I've been told that this is what you can do to make things work and that when someone comes into annex, if you zone them 3.5 dwellings per acre, everything will fall in line. We're going to fix the county's water and sewer plan, you know, maps hopefully in the near future so that way that's not an issue. And that should take care of the, the bulk of the problems that we're having.
So as you predicted, you know, one property at Morgan Ridge is likely to develop into multiple properties. That would almost solve the problem just by all of them coming in at once. It'd be easy to say a zoning of three, correct? Or 3.5?
It's based on the individual property, so the individual parcel.
Okay.
Sounds like the, you know, 143 Morgans Ridge Road is, I can't remember how many acres it is at this point. Offhand, it's two point something acres. And if you divide 21,000 it was over the 3.5 dwellings per acre. So I wasn't understanding where the state was coming from until they sent me a generalized zoning map that they wanted me to review for their overall plan. And they broke it down and showed R 21 is 2.07 dwelling units per acre. And I went, oh.
Gotcha, okay. John, you have another comment?
Yeah, just a couple more items. The special zone we kind of talked about and you've suggested and we floated. To me, that would satisfy and solve future annexation problem. And to just that property. The current applications that are in limbo, obviously we're dependent on the state making a good decision there. But the comment I wanted to make is that Morgan's Ridge, that's a good point you make. Unfortunately, Charles County is inundated with many, many old communities on well and septic. These are communities that were developed on one, one and a half, two acre lots. And there, and the groundwater is rising and all the septics are failing. The county has a process and you can certainly look in their water and sewer ordinance. But a petition process where a community, let's say there's 15 homes in an old community and they're all having failing septic. That community has to get together and I think is what percentage of, of the total has to agree. But they file a petition with Charles County requesting that they be allowed to hook up to public water and sewer. The, the, and now the people are going to pay their commensurate share of the cost of that. So all 15 lots are going to pay towards that. But what it enables the county to do is authorize them to extend lines into that project and interconnect them. Now again, the county's agreeing to it. The county is now going to allow this project to connect to their public water and sewer. But the residents are still going to pay for it over time. Now it's, it's a long amateurized payment process. So it's, it's fairly gentle per year per resident. But, but that's an ongoing problem in, in Charles County that's, that's not going to end anytime soon. And not too far to the west, Port Tobacco is another good example of a lot of older communities that are suffering from failing septic. And the county struggles to figure out how to, how to solve that problem because there's no public water and sewer lines within reasonable vicinity. In that case, what the county would probably have to do is put in a package treatment plant to serve however many, you know, subdivisions are in dire need of water and sewer service. So that's a much grander scale. And fortunately, the town of La Plata is not, doesn't have that, you know, precipice hanging over it quite yet. But the potential does exist in the future. So I, I think for the short term, we have to depend on the state. I think from here on out, the suggestion is that you would, you develop a special unique zone that's applicable to annexations for these fringe lots, which should solve the problem initially. So again, just final thoughts on the topic. You're right, it is very complicated and too many moving parts, too many agencies. But, and, and, and in answer to Greg's original comment, there's no benefit to the town, there's no benefit to the county when this project interconnects other than they're not going to be rate payers in the public water and sewer system. The benefit to the residents to enable these people to be able to continue to live on their property. So, so there's the benefit and that's where the town and or the county out, again, provides the outreach to residents when they're in these untenable situations where they do need both county and or town help. So, so there's, there's the silver lining for why these are done.
Yeah, I've, I've, I can't tell you how bad I felt talking to these residents that are pleading for me to help fix the issue and to get them the funding so they can connect. And I can't do anything. It is very frustrating and I feel terrible that they have to just kind of sit here and wait to see how things are going to go. So if I can try to get ahead of this and figure out a relatively simple solution that doesn't create, you know, major issues. I mean, because not only are we looking at the density of these lots, but we also have to take into consideration setbacks, building frontage, you know, all those different types of things to make sure that we're accommodating these properties without putting us in a situation that's, you know, everything's developing for lots, you know, on an acre where that wasn't really the initial intent. So it's kind of a fine balance that we have to look at.
So I think I'm hearing again, another consensus that the idea of going with this special zoning. I, I support it because clearly the, the goal of getting people off of failed septic system is in everybody's interest, even the state. And by having this zoning, it allows it to be at least paid for. The fact that I, I feel that we're just responding to an arbitrary number, well, okay, that's my opinion, but it's not enough to say we shouldn't go in that direction. So if the consensus is the, I'm suggesting that I'm hearing a consensus that we go with this special zoning. Is there anybody on the commission that feels that that is not our consensus?
This is Greg. I just want to clarify. We for looking at the special zoning, but I would like to see what is the second and third order effects of that? Just like Ms. Harrington said, because I'm not sure from what I'm hearing, if we do that, the impact it would have on everybody else in that area, you know, the unforeseen consequences. So I'm for looking at it, but just getting a little bit more feedback on, is there any unintended consequences or impacts that we may not be aware of at this moment?
Well, that would be addressed in any annexation that gets put before us for proposal, correct?
Yes, and I, and part of that is going through and trying to figure out. I'm sure that they have a very valid reason behind 3.5 dwelling units. I just don't know what it is offhand or why they chose that specific number. Since I haven't had a chance to really dive into that, I just, I just keep being told that that is the number. So when I, now that I have a kind of consensus as to, you know, creating a intermediate zone between the R 21 and the R 10, when I come back to the planning commission, I will bring back a kind of rough draft of what this zone could look like. I will provide any research or data that I find on the 3.5 dwelling units and why that was, you know, kind of the direction the state wanted to go in for priority funding area. And also look at any other issues that might arise with that density or, you know, those properties that are in the municipal growth area, but not in the town right now. So I will certainly bring all of that detail to you.
Okay, do you need anything else further from the commission on this subject?
Not right now.
All right. Moving on to matters of information. Under the planning department, we mentioned this at the last meeting that Commissioner Mudd's term, since he was filling in for someone, his term ends this month. So he and I have, he's interested in continuing, which would require a reappointment. And so Evelyn and I are to talk about that and then have a recommendation, go to the town council. So I'll talk with Evelyn next and hopefully we'll be able to see John back in our next meeting. Any questions or comments on that subject?
I do, as the, I'm sorry, I do. This was Tracy, as the commissioners, do we vote on that or is that just decided upon?
No, the, the process is that the, the chair and the council member quote interview, we've already interviewed John before, and then make a recommendation to the town council. If maybe Brent or Janine might have a, a different interpretation of that, but in my reading of chapter 40, it didn't go into a lot of detail. And that's how we've gone into, anybody else who's been on the commission, is that correct?
So it is. As you pointed out, they have the interview process, which we've already done. He filled in for a term that was partially done. And so in order to extend, it's just a matter of having the council extend, basically make him, extend his term for an additional five years.
Any further questions or comments on that, Tracy?
No, thank you.
I bet comments from anybody else? Okay, not hearing any. Janine, do you have a department update?
I do. So for upcoming projects, we're going to be getting the major subdivision for the townhomes at Potomac Square. That was an annexation off of Scroggins Street that was done in 2019. There's some townhomes that are proposed in the back. So they'll be moving forward with that major subdivision. They were holding off because we had run out of school seats last year for the last fiscal year. So they're coming at the beginning of the FY 23 school seat allocation period to, to try to get that approval. I also have two more projects that are not on this list because they were last minute changes. So Steeplechase has their phase three development. And they had done their preliminary plat review for that and we were going to take that to planning commission. And then I realized that we had never finalized the amendment to their master site development plan. Whereas in 2005, we had done the T and D kind of mud zoning for the Steeplechase developments. And we have since changed that to its own planned unit development with its own regulations based on past approvals. And that previous master site development plan did not include phase three. So they have to amend the master site development plan before we can move forward with the preliminary plat for phase three. So we will be taking the initial master site development plan for introduction and review to the council, hopefully on the 12th of July and then proceed forward, you know, as we are able to. And the second one is AgroCopia. They had their section 7A that they wanted to bring their major subdivision forward. However, the, the lots, the layout of the lots for section 7A did not match the preliminary plat. So I pointed that out and the property developer pointed out that when Bolton had done the initial kind of survey for the preliminary plat, I guess some numbers were off and, and things just didn't quite fit with the subdivision now. So they are going to have to amend their preliminary plat and then move forward with section 7A with the planning commission. So we will bring those most likely AgroCopia to the August meeting. And Steeplechase may come in September or maybe October. So I'll have to keep you updated on that. And as we've kind of discussed today with chapter 191, other areas that we're looking at is the sign code. I've found a template model ordinance for a sign code that I think will work much better, not only for the, the businesses, but also for code enforcement and town staff trying to keep everything in line. Our current code has a lot of gray area that's difficult to kind of interpret. And we're getting kind of back and forth arguments, well, it could mean this, well, it doesn't mean this. And, and let's just make it clear cut and, and a little bit more broad. I pointed out the adequate public facilities ordinance. We have the initial draft of that done. It is currently in legal review to kind of start that conversation. And then we're bringing that forward for draft review for the planning commission. And then we're looking at the form-based code for that downtown sustainable community area in the, in the downtown core to create an, enable the downtown to redevelop easier than with using traditional conventional zoning. So that's something that we're going to play around with and, and kind of look at that a little bit closer. And then chapter 173, our subdivision ordinance is in desperate need of an upgrade. So that is something that I've already started looking at and kind of looking at other municipalities and counties and seeing how we can, and update that in the future. For development updates, we've issued a couple of grading permits since we last met. Heritage Green Neighborhood K, which had their preliminary plat approval. And then Heritage Green Parkway Phase 1B, which is the darker green area on the, the map there. We've issued the grading permits for those. For business updates, we've had a few occupancy permits that have been issued mostly for tenant fit outs for 113 Howard Street and rejuvenation medical aesthetics. 109 St. Mary's Avenue, glorious physique beauty spa. 6293 Crane Highway was just an interior remodel for Wendy's. And then 110 Jury Drive was an expansion of the Southern Maryland Martial Arts Center. For matters of information, I kind of alluded to it earlier. The Maryland Department of Planning sent me a generalized zoning map and, and wanted me to review what they had on file. And if there was anything that didn't look right to kind of point that out. I, I found a lot of discrepancies, so I've pointed all of those out. And hopefully we can have a larger discussion on that along with the priority funding area and then how all that's working in. We're working on a development capacity analysis that takes into consideration water and sewer capacity as well as school seat allocations. Before I just kind of looked at the proposed subdivisions or developments and kind of what the developer said that they wanted to do. So this is going to be a more tightly wound analysis that will take into consideration where our water and sewer capacity is, where it might go. And then also a reasonable number of school seat allocations per year. The urban tree canopy study that I mentioned with the Alliance for Chesapeake Bay and the Davies Resource Group, that inventory portion has been completed. And we are moving into the community outreach portion. So yesterday Laura and Kelly and Zach with the Alliance for Chesapeake Bay, we're at the 4th of July event at Town Hall. So just kind of start promoting and talking to people about trees, getting some initial input. We'll have some surveys and links that we'll start putting out. And we're going to plan on having a community, a public community meeting to get inputs later this month and we'll be releasing those details soon. We're going to be talking about school seat allocations for the FY 2023 fiscal year on July 12th, which is next Tuesday. As I've mentioned in the past, we are trying to keep everyone updated on what's going on in the town. So not only are we updating the meetings and different updates on Facebook, but we also have a separate link on the town's website for monthly development updates that I'm kind of laying out what's going to be on the agendas, what's forthcoming, what we've issued, talking about annexations and generally just providing some information as to where people can submit comments and what we're working on as far as development is concerned. And then I've already kind of gone over the draft code revisions. And with that, that's all I have unless anyone has any specific questions for me. And with that, that's all I have unless anyone has any specific questions for me.
Any questions, Janine? Okay, not any. Um, normally we would call upon Evelyn to provide the council update. And when she is not here, I would call upon anybody from the council and the mayor was on earlier. She's not anymore. Uh, Janine or Brent, do either of you have anything to add on behalf of the council?
I do not. My brain has, I've used all the capacity I have. Just talk about the, I said, I'm just coming back off of my vacation and, uh, the jet lag is getting to me.
And you just jumped right into the fire, so. Okay, so before we adjourn, uh, August is when we typically have the national night out, which conflicts with our meeting. I think we discussed that. But my calendar still shows August second is our meeting.
So I just haven't changed that then. Um, but we do have on the, on the town's website and we had discussed it before that we would move it to the Wednesday, August third, if that still works for everyone.
Okay. Any objections to that?
What date is that?
It's Wednesday, August third. It would normally, we'd normally have it second, which is that Tuesday. And we kind of agreed to move it one day, but if that doesn't work now, we can certainly re-review that.
No objections from me.
Okay, so, um, August third will be our next meeting. Is there anything else to be brought up with this meeting for the good of the commission? Not hearing any. Uh, I adjourned this meeting at seven thirty-two. Thank you all for very good discussion tonight and Janine, get some rest.
Thank you all so much. I'm very, very-
See you later.
Thank you.